...laws are pushing here in the back, there's copies in the office also. At this time we'll stop. Can you play? Okay. I'd like to raise the hand to the right.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time I'd like to have you all shut off your cellphones. And one person talk at a time please. And when you get up here to speak, please introduce yourselves. Okay Liz, you want to start us off here?
Okay, just a little background. The planning commission had started on this...
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago. And anyhow, Keith Marvin's our consultant who we've been working with. They've had their public hearing a month and a half ago or so where the planning commission voted to send it to here. And so now we're at the point of taking comments, both in favor or against, of anything that's in the regulations, the zoning map, and the subdivision draft. And so, we'll take a look.
Good afternoon, Keith Marvin. Couple of key notes that if you've come through here that you need to be aware of is, one, you've got a lot more definitions than you do in your current regulations. The districts themselves have not changed significantly. They're basically the same names. We've added a little expansion on the map as far as especially the RCI, just pick up along all the corridors. What that does is that allows you to continue to farm, but it also allows for some mixed use development to go in intersections along those routes. And they're all basically highway routes. You will notice in here that the livestock section is probably a little bit friendlier than it has been the past. What was proposed is that no major confinement will be required to get a conditional use permit unless they exceed 2,500 animal units. So anything below that, they still have to meet the requirements that they can get a permit from Liz, as opposed to doing the public hearing process with both the planning commission and the county board. We have key updates in here with regard to the dog entertainment. The last two, three years, if you've been paying attention, there's been several counties in the state that have been sued for 150 million each by one individual, claiming their regulations were unconstitutional. What you have in here is model of what's coming out of those meetings with, like Hall County and all of that, that Nerman was working with them on the development. So that's what we've followed on here. Couple of key items on that is, you will no longer see that there are conditional use permits. We've got a page or so of different things that they have to meet upfront. The courts have ruled that if you do that, you cannot do a conditional use permit. That they did, they've ruled that that is basically hitting the nail twice with the hammer, as opposed to just having those center rules. The other thing is that you've got to have them in key locations, that you've got to be able, they've got to be able to find a place to locate that equals roughly 3 to 5% of your jurisdiction in this county. Now, as I've told other counties, just because they may be allowed in an RCI, doesn't mean that whole area is going to get a bunch of dog entertainment. You're going to probably, if you ever see one in this direction, you'll see one probably, and it'll go wherever they can find what they want to work with, and it'll be done. Most of these are required, and these guidelines could be no more than a quarter mile of a highway. That helps law enforcement to keep an eye on them. So what you're regulating with the dog entertainment is not the actual business itself, but the secondary effects that go along with that. That meaning prostitution, drugs, et cetera. So that's how we, that's what we're allowed to do, and how we can regulate them. The key on here is anybody who go in, they have dancers, the stage has got to be 18 inches off the ground, and nobody can be more closer than six feet to the stage. So that keeps a separation of those, of individuals involved in those activities. So those are all things that are eligible and have been ruled to be constitutional. The other thing that's probably been the biggest thing that you're going to deal with today is wind. Your current regulations stipulate 2,000 feet from a non-participating. The proposal that you have in front of you is 2,700 feet. And we also have a statute regulation in here that believes limits it to two turbines per non-participating, between a 2,700 setback and a 4,000-foot setback. So what that does is that keeps those turbines from being, having several of them placed around one non-conforming person. So there's a number of other things that are taking place. At this point, the proposal would, because of the distance, eliminate any issues with noise. And part of that's coming, I believe, freshly, that came from kind of the attorney as well, did it not Liz? Because of the issues that you've had with the noise studies. We're trying to use the separation distance as that button. As has been noted in the other meetings, we're jumping to 2,700. Your rules are 2,000. We haven't seen how the 2,000-foot rule works yet, because those are being built as we're having this hearing, so. Anything I've missed, Liz?
Maybe touch on the pipeline.
Okay. We did have some initial stuff on the pipeline. There was, there's some belief, well, there's some information that your attorney is not comfortable with where it's at right now and trying to deal with the enforcement. The feds can't come in and override you on certain things. What the planning commission wanted to do, and what I suggested, was we eliminate it out of this draft, and if this gets approved, I will go back and I'm going to write a basic pipeline rule that deals with protecting that area around it based upon the pressure in the line, and what, and some other things, so that there is no, nothing built in those areas. And they have to stay so far back as well from different buildings when they come, when they come through. So that's one thing that we may do. It's up to you gentlemen, if you want to, I guess, pursue that anyway, at that, at this point, but it is not in here at this point. And I guess, last thing is, for the first time since you've been doing this, about '98, '99, we've proposed some set of subdivision regulations. They are very basic. This gives you a better way of tracking what's going on out there when people divide the land. Just for basic information, the state defines a subdivision as, anytime you take a parcel and divide it into two or more parcels, and the smallest resulting lot is 10 acres or less. So if somebody comes in here and does an 11, splits off an acreage, it's 12 acres. That's not a subdivision. That continues as you've been doing. What we're trying to do is, at least, this gives also, this also helps the assessor keep track of what's going on out there with land divisions. So there's some basic rules in here, but most of the time, those aren't going to kick in unless you get a major, somebody wants to do a major subdivision within your jurisdiction. Most of that's going to probably happen in the communities. Questions for you guys?
About this time.
Okay.
Twenty-seven hundred feet.
Yes.
Where's that from?
That's from the residence.
To?
To the center of the, the center of the turbine.
I just wanted to ask in the third, the kind of statements I thought was wrong. You said that you haven't tried the 2,000-foot rule, very least two and three is 2,000-foot.
Well, I thought the first one that they were doing, that was being constructed, was the one that's going up right now.
Very least two and three is 2,000.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm not sure.
There's one 2,000-foot from our house, which was the closest I could have.
But I think the setback at that time was 1500.
No, here it was 2,000.
But some of those towers couldn't.
It was 2,000.
It was 2,000 at that time.
Yeah.
I know, and they were before me.
All right. I was, I guess I was under the impression that that changed prior to the new one going up right now.
So where do you want to start with this?
Well, it's up to you gentlemen, if you want to start keeping testimony or ask questions of my committee or Liz.
I hope you can testify.
Let's do the testimony, testimony though. Some of this is probably, parts you read about the, the, talking about the, I'll just go either whatever it was. Okay, where do we start at here? Don't even think about it.
Okay, I, from that wind tower. Basically, you can just ask people to come up and state their name, as you already asked them, and then they can state their comments and...
What do you hear?
Okay, let's do that. Okay, we're all wanting to come up with it.
Are you going to say four and yes?
Yeah. Yeah, you need to testify for or against.
We should do it by four and against. Should we do the against this time first? Remember, we did it the other way than last time? Let's do the against first. Okay, Holly, you want to come up here?
Good afternoon. Good evening, everybody. I'm Holly Moret from Brunswick. I've lived there 40 years. My family, or my husband's family, has been there several generations. I want to thank you for doing a thankless job once again. I know it's a headache, and everybody is tired of the subject, I am sure, although everybody is, including my staff. I thank the zoning committee, I thank them too, they did a wonderful job, but they're tired of it as well. I think they were very remiss in leaving out the noise restrictions there. I was a little bit lax in getting to all the zoning meetings, primarily because I assumed, wrongly assumed, that they would do what I would consider the right thing. I was wrong. So I didn't attend very many meetings, and I should have. So in that case, I am here now pleading with you to put in some zoning restrictions. I don't think the distance is enough. I think if you don't, if you avoid the zoning restrictions, it's going to get abused. At some point, it's going to get abused. If not in 10 years, it might be in 20 years, who knows? But you just can't ignore it and let it go away. It's that important. You have to have some noise restrictions. Thank you. So, continue to do your point.
Thank you.
I got a question. Should the noise level be on everything out there?
I don't know what the current zoning is for everything else. I don't know.
Like irrigation motors and so forth, if they're against the house or, or drain fans?
I don't know on that one, but yeah, I think there should be some. I guess I, I'm not familiar with what it is currently. So, so yeah, that's up to our zoning board and you guys. Because yeah, in the ag community, we all have, most of us have fans, we have, yeah, you name it, it's out there. We're a very ag-based county. This is not agriculture at all, it's, it's industry. And I would like to see the address was set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do that. Next person.
Hello, my name is Judy Walcott. I live in Berry Breeze 2, which I believe Mr. Marvin was with the rules that put that in, and it was changed to 2,000 feet in Berry Breeze 2 and 3, defined by that. And to comment on his clustering suggestion, I think around us, which we've complained many times about the clustering, it would maybe remove two at most around our place and there's, I don't know, where do you want to draw the line, clustering. But we have a symphony around us that's free of, from the ones that are free to 2,000-foot. So taking two around us would not completely preclusture. So I guess, the main thing we have come up here about time and time again is the noise. And over the years, you've had complaints about the noise at the 50 dba noise limit from people a thousand miles from the tower, or a thousand feet, I wish it was a thousand feet, slipped there. 2,000 feet like us, 2,700 foot, which Susan Burke complained about, at the 50 dba noise level. Now, instead of addressing the noise, you're still addressing the distance. And he proposes moving it to a distance so we already have noise complaints, or where the noise level's older than perhaps a decibel of what it is at our house. So I just feel that the logical way to handle all these complaints is to deal with the noise. Make it a reasonable level at the homes. The distance will probably take care of itself. And all the complaints hasn't just been about the noise and infrasound. At past meetings, we've asked you to follow GE's guidelines for setbacks and isoling control, to have setbacks for property lines instead of homes, to remove the shadow flicker from homes, which they can do at a flip of a switch, or they don't have to flip the switch. There are controls they can put on, where they know the flicker's going to be on the house. We don't have that power, I know others that do. That can be controlled, but it's never been addressed. So why aren't we addressing the problems that people are complaining about? Ignoring it has not done anything to go away, and it's compromising the health and safety of anybody else that they don't, the power nets do. So, to me, it's comparable to if a neighborhood is complaining that people are driving too fast past their homes, and they ask for the speed limit to be reduced, or at least enforced. What happens? They remove the speed limit entirely because they don't want to enforce it. That's what's happening with our noise limits. So I'm requesting that you do not approve the wind tower section of this offer for now. Continue it in a moratorium. Conduct a survey in the county of the people who live in these projects and within a certain distance of the project. The ones that have the experience to know what works and what doesn't work. So if you would consider doing this, I would willingly offer to help draw up a survey, to put out the details of what they think are the problems, and what the corrections are. Let's draw on the resources of our people who have lived through these problems, to draw up guidelines that'll work for the county. So instead of throwing the noise limits out, let's control the noise. Thank you.
All right, I said, my team's not really... Yeah, and I voiced my concern to the zoning board at the final meeting that they made a grave error in removing the decimals. And I don't know if you guys have, you have at your discretion, study the decimal, study what was done on the properties in Berry Breeze 2, or whichever project that is. And look at the distance of those towers. Study the distance of those towers. So that you know yourself, do you know yourself then, that 2,700-foot is going to stop it by the studies that have already been done on existing towers? I don't know where anyone has, I mean, you'll be making a, what do I want to say? Well, I can't come up with a word, but, you know, adopting an ordinance with no decimals on wind energy will make you a person. If that's, if that's what you want to be, if you think everybody has the ability and the knowledge to know what distance it takes. I happened to be just five days ago, I was in Northern, or Hope County, I was on the north side of that project. I was a mile away, and I sat there in the middle of the road, and I listened to the sound that I would equate to a jet or airplane getting ready to take off, but it never took off. I could, I, I videoed it on my cellphone, and was able to, with just the cheapness of a video machine on a cellphone, I could record that noise, and I was a mile away from the closest tower. I was on the north side of that project. So that is not 2,700 feet. The shadow flicker was taken completely out. They think that 2,700-foot will stop shadow flicker. That sure isn't any of the research I've done myself. In here, and I believe I printed this off this morning, is this what the final document would look like, what would come off of your website this morning, Liz, without any changes?
That looks like it's got the red lines in it the way it's printed, so...
Yeah.
Okay, I asked, I asked this question, and I still don't know, I see it's listed in here. Ice breaking. I'm assuming that's referring to the slinging, so I'm page 114 of the, of the resolutions. Ice breaking. It's spelled the same as if I break a window, that kind of break. Now, is, is, is that what that means? It says, "Ice breaking means built to an individual wind turbine that will shut down the turbine to ice buildup is detected." Now, is there that technology available? And by breaking, do we mean once it breaks something, or do we mean B-R-A-K-E, as in attempting to stop it? So yes, I would agree with Judy. If you, if, if you feel you're comfortable with all the other changes that have been made in this document, go forward. Leave the wind energy out of it. The zoning committee had gotten to where they didn't like wrestling with it anymore. It's a time-consuming, as I have presented to them and I have presented to you. As of right now, yes, Hope County has more towers than Antelope County does in production. But once upstream is completed, we will be larger than them, and larger than any other county in the state. Do we know what we're saddling our future generations with? And the comment on the, on the decimals, as an irrigation motor or a grain bin fan, that's always brought up. If any one of you want to feel that the noise of an irrigation motor or a grain bin fan is as bad, then I will ask you, are any of those 24/7/365? Anyone that has to listen to the neighbor's irrigation motor, is that 24/7/365? The grain bin fan, same question. We're dealing with issues I do not know the answers, and by no means am I saying what needs to be done. All I know is the research that I've done in other parts of the nation where wind towers have been an issue, and this all comes up. And, you know, 50 decibels is not even adequate. But we've been at 50 decibels. And now they're taking that out, they're taking it completely out. So then, how rampant, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'll compare, let's go to the wild, wild west. That's what we're going to be for the length and the duration of these contracts. The contracts that I have had access to on these developments are for 25 years, renewable for another 25. So we're saddling for 50 years these decisions. As far as the moratorium, you know, I guess, I don't think that you should feel that you're inconveniencing anyone with a moratorium. Now, it didn't make it out of committee, but it's being worked on. Senator Brewer, last year, introduced to the natural resources committee to put a two-year moratorium on wind development until we know more across the state. So, now, it, it didn't make it out of committee, but, and it will be introduced again. So it's not just like, if you put a moratorium on here until you do more fact-finding, I don't think you need, matter of fact, I think you need to be, feel real comfortable with yourself that you're doing a thorough job. We, there's, there's got to be a decibel, I guess. That's all I've got. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I do have one more comment. And I guess this has been in the zoning regulations from the beginning, and where it was placed, and I had never noticed it. I had overlooked it all the time. But I did bring it up when I finally did realize it had been in the, in the zoning, I guess, since we've had wind regulations, and I'll bring it up to you now, and it's still in there. You know, what we're requesting is for the non-participating, just the few people that have not signed contracts. Why then in this ordinance? If we're not to have a concern about decimals or shadow flicker, why does a participating residence have a thousand-foot setback from a wind tower? There's always been all this discussion, they spent tremendous amounts of time on it at the zoning. You know, well, if we go 2,700-foot from a house and can't have a tower built, look at all those acres. Look at all that we're saying that, you know, places where towers can't be built. Now, we're just talking non-participating, so you can't go to every residence and put 2,700-foot on it. So if there's a shortage of area to build towers on, someone that's benefiting, benefiting financially from having signed an agreement, let's move them closer to their, to utilize more acres, to get more. Give them, give that residence the same setback as you give my property line. You're only going to set it back, I believe, 1.1 from my property line. I would say that person's house deserves that, the same respect as my property line. But if there's not a problem with decimals, and if there's not a problem with shadow flicker, and they're gaining monetarily from having one there, they should be more than happy to have them placed anywhere on that property. I see no reason not to. And then that gives them more area to build towers on, and allows those of us that choose not to, to have some happiness. Now, the comment's going to be made, well, maybe the person signed up, you know, and didn't get a tower. You know, and that house didn't get a tower, but the neighbor across the road did. If they signed up, they rolled the dice, you know? You buy a piece of property, you buy a house, you do anything, you hope to make money on it. If you signed that contract, if the developer promised you a tower by signing that contract, then that's between the developer and that property owner. But if you signed it just knowing you might get a tower, you might get nothing, you might get underground line, you know, that's between them. But I mean, that's just rolling the dice when you signed up. You know, and else they guaranteed you a tower, then like I say, that's between them and, and that person's. But anyway, if there's a concern, where are we going to build towers? By giving the non-participating ones 2,700 or 3,000. 3,000 is what we really requested, you know, from a non-participating. Then look at how much area you've opened up by building closer to those that are benefited. I guess, think about that, if you would, please. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Very cool. I'll be pretty brief, I have something I have to think about. If the zoning rules are approved without noise limits, county will take on a liability for the wind power noise. 50 decibels is the accepted limit throughout the wind tower industry, even though the World Health Organization says anything over 40 is harmful. By approving these regulations without a noise limit, approving these regulations without a noise limit, we relieve the development from all liability to wind noise and put it all on the county. and put it all on county. It also allow the developer to install larger, noisier wind towers without putting responsibility for the noise. Again, the county will be responsible because the industry standard is 50 decibels.
Anybody else?
I don't know if there's other people we just got here. I just got here, I don't know if there's others in the room.
Opposition. Opposition.
I copied this off this... I just copied this off in my computer, this one that had it there for quite a while. You guys haven't seen it. Number two, or right, number two. Would you like to ask your neighbor this over? Maybe you've seen it. Do you have, I got some copies here. And all that I can say, that even half of what's on here is true. It's a cause for serious concerns. And if even half of what's on there is true, all that I can say is that these neighbors out here in the country must not like each other. And perhaps you guys don't like the people that live out there in the country. If half is true, and I believe it is. I've talked to enough people that have similar experiences. Where your liability stands on this, I don't know. I don't like lawyers. I've had a deal with a few of them in my lifetime. What you're dealing with, though, I'm sure a lot of them in this area are very, very sharp lawyers. And I believe that's all I have to say. If you say this in your own, your own conclusions. I might add, if you go to the computer and type in this title, there's a lot more information there on the computer. Anybody else here who can copy this? Gentlemen, we don't have to live out there in the country. I've lived there 20 years now. And the beauty and the peacefulness of the countryside out there when you move there was clearly one thing that motivated us to move where we are. That's changed now. We used to brag that we were 50 miles from the nearest red light, we loved it. Now we look out there on our southeast horizon. Thought that, I guess that makes anybody any difference. I guess I was looking for a place when I bought what we have, and I'm still. Well, yeah, one more thing, I have a distant relative that farms out in southeast of you, several quarters out there. As I understand, he didn't want a single wind tower on his property. He farms with big equipment. I guess he figured them towers began his pay. I can't speak for him, but I'm not going into this decision. The point of it is, is if you drive the small farmers out of there and it all goes to 24-row equipment or bigger, I don't think that many, maybe a lot of them guys, they feel happy either. So it's just kind of a, a situation in my opinion. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Anne Simmons. I didn't really intend to talk about the wind too much because I don't know that, you know, I'm still there. And I still think it should be a decibel level, you know? That's something that would benefit everybody sitting here, right? And you guys, somebody's gotta be liable if somebody makes a complaint. And if you have a decibel thing, you know, we go least in your job. I think by not having any, I don't know if there's anywhere in the whole United States that they don't deal with the decibel system, you know, along the thrones of. I don't know which one, I don't know if that's up to you, but it could be something there just for liability reasons for yourselves, or for our county. And I just had a question on, are we doing the, are you voting today also on, like, how many homes you can put on a quarter and all of those regulations today?
That's part of the hearing that we're gonna have, then we'll decide what we can do.
Is it all, is this all in one big?
Well, it's been removed, but there is no none.
Yeah, they took that out, but they could go back in. Is that what?
Yeah.
Are you wanting it or not wanting it?
I'm not wanting it, because I think that...
It's removed, that you can build two, three houses if you want to.
Yeah, the planning commission decided they didn't wanna deal with the decibel. So they took that out. So, but if you wanted it back in, yeah, today.
No, I just agree that it should, you know, we should be able to decide what we want to do on land, and so. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Holly?
One last comment, if I could. Holly Moret, Brunswick. I can't imagine why the Wind and Street wouldn't be okay with a decibel level. They're beholden to the people, they want more wind turbines. I would think they'd give us what we want. Given that, if anything, I urge you to just err on the side of caution. Put in those decibels, just on the side of caution, you've got nothing to lose, and neither do they. So please consider that.
Anybody else? Now, we're gonna move to those in favor. Anybody wanna start that off?
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Frangle with Inventors. I wanna thank the commission for having me today and the planning commission for the work they've done in writing these ordinance, a lot of reviews coming back and forth, and a lot of things moving along. I wanted to basically hand out some comments for folks to review about the ordinance as it's written, as it focuses on wind. And I can go through that. In general? The first page, I broke it down into a couple of key items, you know, in general, we're happy to work with regulations. What we wanna try and do is strike a balance between what folks are looking at and what will allow projects to be built economically. Obviously, there's folks who want to participate in projects, would like to host wind farms. You guys have three projects in your county already. Hope County has large projects. This is a good spot for wind, it's a good fit with farming, but you know, we want there to balance so that they're gonna be, you know, safe and ordinances and regulations will just drive business out of your county. I broke this down into a couple of things. The first one, during the process of going through the zoning commission, they adjusted the setback from a right-of-way to 1.5 times the blade, but did not match that to a property line. I feel that to be consistent through that setback, and the following pages here show that, I have a copy of it, attached of that section, so if you wanna reference it, that's on page 117. And that is now in the current zoning regulations. Again, they're a current regulation, you have a project underneath that. So in general, I would like to recommend that a lot of that is, stays the way it is, which is 1.1 times the blade as the minimum. And I would request that that property line match the right-of-way setback. People have talked about the further distance, the structure that the zoning board set up is one of those trying to simplify the ordinance, where instead of having different measurements and enforcement action, it would be larger setbacks, which is the 2,700. And, you know, I would say if there's gonna be changes to that, that it's not to larger setback and limitations on sound or shadow, one or the other. Clustering, you know, you have a larger setback from these non-participating houses, clustering is sort of in concept, it creates a, you know, basically a circle of 4,000-foot diameter, it's like 8,000 feet for an non-participating house, or, you know, you're really limiting people's ability to participate in a project. Number four is really about the decommissioning language. Going through the process and seeing what was done with upstream, that was handled with the commissioners, like the proposed language is convoluted, it's overly complicated, and what you have now, you've already been through the process, the council's been through the process, worked, bond isn't in place, those language setting up and that's gonna go in, I think the proposed language is really worth something. The last couple items are more cleanup items, you know, some of the things that were mentioned regarding, you know, the ice breaking, I believe the intent is probably B-R-A-K-E, so there's a few things that I sort of wrote out, they're more cleanup. Happy to ask questions on those. I pointed this out to Liz before, just sort of need to be sort of cleaned up. The main one is that in the setback table, there are two provisions. They contradict each other. I think there was just some language that was accidentally removed. The way I believe the planning commission intended it is, the first setback from a right-of-way is 1.5 blade if the ice breaking software is in place on a machine. The second one is if it's not. But it just lists both of those now, and they've not made clarification language. So maybe there's some other lines I didn't see, or someone didn't mention that out of those comments. In general, it's been, we're working with your county, we'd like to continue to do business in Franklin County. You know, we're hoping to get started on upstream in the near future, and would like to do great progress. So I would ask that you adopt these changes, and we look forward to answering any questions.
Keith, the first thing you addressed was the setback, and was that a typo, or was that the zoning commission included in that or whatever?
That's based on the language that I was directed to use. And I think with regard to the breaking stuff, I'm looking at the marked-up copy that I sent back to the planning commission. It shows that ice breaking procedures as part of the setback being deleted. And it's just strictly 1.5 times the blade length from the property line.
Sure, if that's the version, then that comment doesn't apply. The version that I had is two different.
Yes, I mean, repeat that. What do you think on the ice break, what do you think?
Is it 1.1 or 1.5?
Originally, we had in there a suggestion to go 1.5 times the total height if the ice breaking procedures are put in place during that condition of use. Otherwise, the setback would be 1.5 times the height plus the rotor diameter, which is a GE setback for ice growth. And if, based upon my notes, we did, the planning commission had me go back to 1.5 times the blade length.
So 1.5 times the blade length, is that considered as an ice growth too?
No, it was just based, they wanted to simplify requirements, what they, is, am I correct on that?
I had to do the research back in the day. I had thought that the two different lengths on the, like, the road right-of-way and other right-of-ways, one was with the ice breaking procedures, I haven't looked out, but on the red line, the planning commission showed that it's crossed. So I'm not, but that wasn't the copy that we had here.
Yeah.
I'm not 100% sure.
I mean, it's up to you, gentlemen, if you wanna put the ice breaking stuff back in, that's your prerogative. The reason there were two at that point was there was, it was an either-or situation. So they either have this, they either have this procedure in place not to throw ice and starts icing, push it down on one or the other, or they had to go further and leave these specs off of GEs.
Yeah, if it was recommended was just one, that's fine. The original size is a two, so.
Yeah. And then number three? Page step one is 2,700 feet. That means you can't set another one, or?
So it's basically like, you draw a line, it's almost like the two circles. So 2,700 feet from non-participating house, nothing's allowed, and then within 2,700, 4,000 is the second circle.
If you put another one up, then that one that was at 2,700 has to go back 4,000.
The third one would have to.
The third.
Right, so two could go in that circle.
Of 2,700 feet?
Between 2,700 and 4,000.
Okay.
And then if there was a third one that would fall anywhere within that circle, it would have to be pushed out 4,000.
4,000.
So effectively, that's already got about a mile, because you have 2,700 feet on each side, a mile circle. And now you're increasing it to 8,000 feet diameter. What are you thinking?
You think that's too restrictive?
I'm listening.
Don't you think the more towers you have around the home, the more problems you have, or is there pretty noise?
This is already with an increased setback distance further than they're passing in, so I feel like those items are already affecting the conditional into.
And I guess the background behind that is if you look at the current project that's under construction, there were a couple, I believe, non-participating dwellings that had roughly five or six of them spotted within a half-mile to a mile of that particular home. So that's one of the reasons it's got, it's been put in here to reduce that risk.
Yeah, that's one thing I was, I guess, put too many by a non-participating, I mean, two, you know? If you want to get rid of clustering, they go to 3,000, would you, 3,000? Would it be better for you to go to 3,000 and get the clustering?
Really hard to say, it looks like in general, maybe more restrictions and setbacks, because already, you know, a project deals with pivot corners, grazing areas, where it works for folks who want to have these projects, they're limited, they're limited in setbacks from, so for example, weapons, they're limited for airports. And so as you continue to grow, to such a point where windows get replaced, so far apart from the design, not for projects, it more increases the distance.
I know the decibel thing is a big problem. I was trying to find the distance that if it's almost eliminated, I think 3,000 would probably help, but I'm still worried about the clustering.
They're not only one, one amount. You know, if you wind north and it wasn't north and making noise, it wasn't south.
That's nothing I've discovered. That's nothing, I'm just going to bring it up. By clustering, I mean, one thing I don't like is nonparticipate having one or two this way, or two this way, and two this way. If somehow or another we could eliminate them all in one direction, I think that would be a, that would, at least, you could go on one side of your house now.
I don't understand that. You could build your patio on another side of the house.
That's true, I don't worry. You need us now.
Well, yeah, well, because you sit in your house and you got, you wouldn't sit on one side, you know, you could sit there and look out the side and not see nothing, you want towers within miles. But you go to the backside, yeah, a lot of people back there, oh, I'm not going to sit back there, I'm going to sit out here. I mean, it, I just, I wouldn't like them all around, if I was the number just that, I wouldn't like them all around, that's what I'm trying to say. I wouldn't mind, I'd be more susceptible to having them in one direction, that's just me.
So then this neighbor over here that wants one, you say, I don't like you, I like this one over here, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, no, I'm thinking of myself, I just don't want them all around me like that.
Most of the concern here is.
How you would do it, I don't know, I don't know what regulation.
It's up to the noise level. When you put the towers out there and say they're clustered, that does, that does the noise levels. Noise levels is.
Same no matter what.
The further out they are and more up, that noise level is, it does range.
Just like these things.
But a lot of the, a lot of people that make comments is, they can look out this door, and look out the window, and look out, and they're just looking at.
This came up in the planning commission, let me think about it, as, from any sound source, further away or required.
Okay, you done?
I am, yes.
Okay. I would have to ask you to hold that until you can, let the people know. Okay, anybody else that want to make comments later? Later? Anybody that, or anybody else want to say anything?
Ah, well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good day. Robert Johnston, J O A G N S T, to land for the record. I come at different times to testify, like mainly, I testified for economic development. I testified for RAN, I testified for pipelines, I testified for wind towers, anything that led economic development to the county. A comment I would make about the, about the decibel level, I do not live by wind towers, so I can't pretend to say that, that I understand what, what some of the folks are experiencing. But, but my concern is that if we, if we have a decibel, is it going to set a precedence to anything that we do in the county? We have what, four major highways that go through the county, is it going to set a precedence? Is it going to set a precedence of my tractor, I don't know about somebody else's, my drain bin thing, my combine, my irrigation unit, what about my truck engine brake? I don't know how many decimals that is. I know those aren't 24/7, 365. One of my neighbors weaned calves, what's the decimal of all calves, cows and calves? They're 24/7, they're not 365. So I just, this, um, this, this time of year, we're all going through our tax hearings, you guys did one this morning, I'm going to be involved in a firebuckle hearing here in a couple days. Every one of those tax hearings are, are asking for revenue from every one of us, we're going to have to pay taxes. How many, how many chances are we going to get in the county for economic development? I guess that's, that's my main, my main point. Liz and her planning commission, I thank you guys for all your time, and I thank you guys for your time.
Anybody else that wants to testify in favor?
Good afternoon, my name's Art Candrick from Neelam, and I guess, I was okay with the 2,700 feet, I think that allows, you know, you can, 27 is less than a half a mile, so if somebody just has quarter of a land, you know, sitting out here, you can, you can put a tower on it as long as you're away from nonparticipating. You go bigger than that, and then a landowner's going to have to own about, you know, a section of land in order to put towers out in the middle of that. And I think if that sort of thing happens, you know, wind development will probably leave Anlone County. So I, you know, I think we have to think about some of those things. I do have friends that live in the Elgin area, and I know some of the towers are too close to their homes. I know that's a problem. So, you know, and I, I thank the planning committee, they've been wrestling with this issue for some time, you guys have wrestled with it for some time. It's, it's really a tough issue, because, you know, you want to, you want to see positive development in the county, you know, we have a prime opportunity in the renewable energy field here in Anlone County. We look at the wind maps, you know, we're right here where a lot of states would love to be, you know, for wind development. It's, you know, it's something of the future, and we know that, you know, hopefully, the technologies are just going to get better and better and better, and hopefully they'll eventually do something to, to solve these issues, but right now, you know, there are some issues with the, with the wind development, and we think, you know, I really care with this 2,700 feet, where the people can still, you know, with the setbacks, so you can still put a tower on a corner, is a good thing for Anlone County. And I guess that's, you know, I, I also, I, I do not have a problem with a 50 decimal sample limit, even that's something that doesn't bother me at all to take that back, so I guess that's kind of what I have to say today, and questions, as I have to answer. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else that wants to testify?
I'm Kathy Schultz, and I'm going to comment to Dean and to all of you, we have a pasture up by Page, and at least once a week, I drive up through all those windmills. And when my niece goes with me, we go on these back roads and we shut the diesel pickup off, and you can hear a noise, I'm not there 24/7, but if I drive my diesel pickup, I don't hear anything. If you shut it off, I'll hear a small hum, and we even drove into cemetery up there because the thing was right across the fence from the cemetery, and it didn't make any difference in the noise level. But we're up there at least once a week, I drive through them, sometimes twice a week. Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to testify?
My name is Jim Keeney, Cor. I'm actually coming to sit down too, who's right. I was down in Lincoln yesterday, with my son. Come back, we all did. As usual, I'm here too. First, that's a car you all over there. They wanted to build it right out here, handful of people in this county that stopped. What did Carolyn say? Why? There's no kind of, we can't afford to keep doing this, we have got to see this on the village. We just left that stuff by so many guys, don't be done, especially this new town. Same way, we basically blew them out, and I don't understand why. I realize there's a lot of controversy between the towers. I think the zoning board is an adequate job, they have put a lot, a lot of time into this. I would urge you guys to adopt their recommendations and perform with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to testify in favor? If not, notice, Anne, you had a comment?
Yeah, just on the cluster thing, you know, I have five.
I'm sorry I made you do that.
That's all right. I have five across the road, right directly across from my house, and then there's another one right directly across from there, and then there's two more on the, essentially on the other side, and then straight to the west, and we, starting at a mile to a mile and a half, or, yeah, there's four more. Well, the first ones that got done, were the ones that were straight to the west. And I'm going to tell you, we were up all night, and several nights, and those were at a mile to a mile and a half, four of them. They came on at that time, and then later, the ones that crossed the road, they came on, I have them on the backside also. But I'm not a scientist or anything, but with the cluster thing, if you, I was to turn my radio on at a certain loudness, and 10 more people came in the room and turned their radios exactly the same, at that same loudness, would, would there be a difference in the noise? Well, would it be louder if they, I can't understand the, saying there isn't more noise or more at a, at a distance, I'm just disagreeing with that, I would say, by all means, it would be louder, right? That's my opinion, I think the clusters are louder, and you will hear them, you know, no matter what you think, so, where you said you're not setting noise level at all, I'm going to tell you it's not. Anyway, thank you.
You had a comment, I appreciate it. Thank you. Noise from drain bin. I've had that experience, I had a neighbor that was not a nice neighbor, put up this big fan on his drain bin, and, with Carolyn, everybody that go on my place, that's Carolyn. Property changed hands, the new owner puts some eight bins around that thing, made all the difference in the world. You can't put eight bins around a wind tower. I was caught in the wind tower country, I used to go, had a black car, I'm going to pick up, caught half a mile away from one of these machines, and I kept looking around, where was this freeway track? Must be just over the hill somewhere, not a real, I know there's no big highway over the hill, but it was rattle, flatter, 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 rattle, you know, no way I want to live there where I was parked with that black tire. And, so, now, there's lots of these windmills around the county already. The question comes up, is wind in the world, is enough enough? Wind is enough enough? Wind is enough enough? Thank you. You know, some years ago, we had a person ask that too, about a cattle feeder. Totally different deal.
Yeah, I suppose, it was either. Should have been on more of an hog fighting.
Yeah, on the hog fighting.
We are a county.
You go ahead.
See, so, I guess my comment is, and I guess it was raised by the wind energies representative to, the zoning people, to Liz and Keith, I, I don't think everything's clear in it. I don't know, you know, that's what I got, and I asked you that question myself about the ice breaking, it's just one issue. I mean, I, I don't see how the wind part of it can be passed, because I don't think it's complete. I don't think it's accurately complete, and, because I think Liz and Keith had different of what happened at the last zoning meeting, as far as this ice throw thing. I don't know where it's become ice breaking instead of ice throw, but I guess my comment is, if you think that you need to move on and pass something, exempt the wind energy portion of it for more research and further detailing, because if there's inaccuracies in it, how do we know what to come and comment on? How do we know that if we have the correct information? That's why I asked the question at the beginning of my questioning. What does that mean? Ice breaking. And wind energy themselves have questions over it. Thank you.
At the point to what Dean just said, at the point to what Dean just said, I'll just briefly comment, the Neelam paper has the regulations wrong, and the Elgin paper had the regulations wrong, so.
Okay. I got one more comment, then we'll, we got one more. Come on up.
I just want to say that Josh stood up here and talked, they're looking for a balance, so they can build, the people in Anlone County, who elect you to do a job to protect our health and safety, are looking for a balance, so you stop driving us out of the country, because we have talked about moving. In March and April, it's that close, the rest of the year, it's never tough. But you need a balance for the people who live in the county, not a balance for the people to build the towers, and I don't think they would build them for all this tax revenue we think the county's going to get if they didn't get tax credits and subsidies to build them, and where do you think those tax credits and subsidies come from? From every taxpayer in this group. So maybe you're going to get some money, but you're going to be paying out money too. It's a two-way street. Thank you.
One thing I comment, I did want to think, you know, I do live in a, in a wind tower deal, and wind towers are not 24/7, 365. They do not run every day. I walked out of my houses this summer once, and I could not hear a wind tower, but I could hear, you know, several irrigation motors, mine too. But they do not run 24/7, 365.
They're supposed to.
They're an efficiency thing, just like anything else.
Do you want farmers or why? That's farming, that's not.
I realize that.
You know, that's farming.
You know, it's going to take industry to think, where are we going to, where are we going to keep our young kids here? Look at the jobs these wind tower people have brought, and they've brought good jobs to the town.
How many?
There's probably 14 or 15 people work there in that deal.
14 or 15 working there, and how many did they bring in, they brought in, but how many in our area work there?
Of our area?
Yeah.
I know. Okay, I guess, sorry.
Big willpower, I can talk about that, bringing our kids back on my place, I know nobody lived there again after I was leaving, I mean, they did very good to mine, as far as I was. Up south in my house, there are 18 of them within a mile and a half. You think they're going to come down there? I don't think, I've done nothing, because I wasn't wise enough when I started building to do something. We're here to help these people here that have had no experience, get that experience. That's all we got.
Okay. Do we want to go through the rest of this stuff and pass the rest of this stuff? I think we're going to have to have some discussion on this wind tower thing amongst ourselves. Couple comments on the wind. Dean's right, I missed a spelling on the breaking, it should be the R A K I N G. And to, you know, clarify my markups, there was a, an inadvertent setback left in, from the property lines with the 1.5 times total height plus whatever the one was, because I showed the ice breaking.
Because I showed the ice breaking information being taken out of that setback from the planning commission that they were last year. So, uh, those are few, in my mind, that they are typos. And what we've got in front of us is, should read the, the setback from property lines 1.5 times the labeling. Because I remember the conversation, they wanted to go back to what they had similar, but shifted a little bit.
From property line?
From property line, yes. And as far as noise, gentlemen, if you want to put something in, I, we were doing based upon what your county attorney was saying, based upon the wind studies that were going on, the sound noise studies that were going on. Because you had two contradictory, uh, reports essentially. And, um, his concern was that thing was just going to end up becoming a bigger issue with the county and costing the county more money, accrued one way or the other. That was his, well, he's afraid of, I think it was going to be in the long run.
But you, you think you put decimals on it, still going, still going to.
I know. Well, he's saying not take it, he's, that's why he suggested getting rid of the decimals completely. And then you take that, you've got distance and then that's what you've got. You don't have to worry about how something's measured versus what the, you know, results are and if a peer review confirms or denies what was done or all that type of stuff.
And what that boils down to is, you know, we need regulations that I can administer and that can be enforced, you know, need be by the county attorney. And he was concerned about how to do that because it was. One option, you know, that we could do if you want the decibels back in is do it, like, have the acoustical analysis as part of the application. And then once it's approved, then that's what you live with.
What do they have that, hard to?
Yeah, they, yeah, but there's also the sound standard that we had in the current ones. There's the sound standard afterwards that, um.
Didn't they change that or just put the other one?
Right now, there's nothing. You mean in the drought?
Yeah.
No, there's nothing. But they increased the 2,700 foot because they took the noise out. So to put the noise back in, you know, do you want something different or not? That's the next question.
The option could be is you could require the acoustical analysis upfront as part of the permit. And basically what you do on the other side of the noise thing is just say that no time till they exceed 50, I mean, they should not exceed 50 decibels. And you can put a time period on it, but I mean, you know, what's the right time period? So. If you say at any time, there's too many variables there that could make it exceed it for five, 10 minutes and then all of a sudden you've got to violate it.
Or attempt at a second, which is something that was coming out. And from an enforcement standpoint, um, just from my experience in Knox County, um, we have problems with campers in the lake area. And if it's a violation and they move that camper and then they bring it back the next day, it's a new violation. And that makes it very difficult to enforce. And like you said, we write, it's not 50 decibels every day if that's what it shows. So can you have a series of violations? You know, I don't know. It, you, you just need to have something that's enforceable too if we're going to have something. I don't have the magic answer. But it's just something to consider.
So, like, Knox County, was it, was it yours or?
Oh, I think we have, like, well, we have basically what was in there before, but I think we have 1,500. And we get, you know, no matter what it is, whether it's wind or anything, you're going to have somebody that doesn't like what somebody else does.
Yeah.
That's just a given. But generally, the wind has not been a problem in Knox County. We have a 1,500 that's set up.
I guess noting on the wind, the one thing I do agree, I guess, with Dean on is that if you are a participating person, I can see why you should be able to put that anywhere in there. So.
And I should add too, I have two planning commission members in Knox County. Um, one, his brother is participating, but he has turbines close to him. And the other one lives on a acreage and he has turbines all around him. And neither one of them, because they said, yeah, you kind of notice it, but it hasn't been a problem for either one. So.
We can't pass this whole thing, you know, altogether anyway, because there's parts of it, I don't know whether we totally understand some of that stuff that.
I mean, you could even, you, I mean, your options today are a couple. You can, uh, not adjourn, but you can, uh, you could close the, not close, I'm trying to think of the right word, continue the public hearing to another date in time specific. If you're satisfied, you can close the public hearing and then take time to move it to another meeting. So you have a chance to read a little bit more of this and understand it a little bit more. And at that time, you come back, but you don't take any more testimony. Whatever you guys decide you want to do is what you're going, I mean, you guys end up doing.
Well, I think we ought to close the public portion and then go on down and let's look at this a little bit more. I'd like to look at this decimal, this cluster a little bit more and the noise level. That way you'll, you'll want to have all that for it again.
Yeah.
We've heard it all and thank you for doing it, sir. Get, get, get a little more.
Are there any more comments?
No. So I guess I just would, Dean's my one closing comment, if I may.
Yep.
After I made my earlier comment and some other comments made, I just would like to, I would share it with you all from my side. I don't want to, I don't think it's appropriate here. But as I said, when I was at the whole county project, I was one of mine, 5,280 on the closest tower. And it sounded like a plane wanting to take off.
Dean, this is the problem I have now.
That's 5,000, maybe I misstated when I said mine, 5,280.
The person gets up and says I was 1,000 feet, I can't hear it now.
I will agree, I got closer to them, it wasn't as bad. The funnel effect.
Drop it, drop the back 1,000.
It's going.
Okay, we got one more comment.
I'd like to have a comment. I've heard this comment before, how these things are not feasible, tax per dollar to build it. My other question for everybody in the room, what is the most efficient form of electric production there is today? Light electric, water. Who built all the dams? Anybody? Built the dams?
No.
Tax per dollar.
Yeah. Well, they built here or something.
Yeah. I mean, I've been, I've been all this country, I've seen dams from east coast to the west coast. Tax per dollar buildings. So when they tell me these aren't feasible because tax per dollar to pay for them, that's not entirely normal whether we give it or not. Right.
Okay. Are there any other questions you should, okay, now, I'm going to close this portion of the public here. I need a motion in a second. Go ahead, a second, second, Mr. Walker. If anybody understands, anybody, Sheller, Carter, Henry?
Uh, okay.
Okay, we got to read, I thought you were about to.
You just right now, well, you have, we just came to set it up for another meeting. Well, I will tell you that I think Joe has looked at the, it also has any of this.
I'm not sure.
I mean, it's something that we. Well.
I think it's probably why it's happening.
In the zoning world, if something is not explicitly allowed, then it's not allowed. If you don't address it and allow it, then you're violating the First Amendment on not being freely on the threat on it. So you, you need to allow it in some way, shape, or form. And if you're going to allow it, you're going to have guidelines to do it right. To do it right. And so, and the stuff that I've got has come through, normally the attorney's, the whole county, it's the public information. And I'm comfortable, you know, uh, the attorney I worked with, who takes the tax, he's seen it, you know, he's even adopted it, part of it or not looked at it from other places. It's a, it's a pain that you have to, but you've got to protect your backside. The scary thing about this is lawsuits that have been going on have been for 150 million dollars, maybe anybody and everything. Okay, well, will that uphold this for that in the courts? Who knows? But the problem is that you end up in court and you find out that you are blatantly violating of that law on this. It's the constant First Amendment issue, it can be triple, triple, uh, lawsuit, triple damage. So you're not only talking 150, you know, you're talking 450 plus all attorney's fees. It's not worth, it's not worth the risk.
Okay. Well, they were still commenting about, like, structures to, like, lead tubes or something, or, I mean, not today. They, you say something about.
Yeah. One of the things, um, we haven't really dealt with is we had a request from the order adjustment because we had three differences since I started, on grain bins, um, because other existing grain bins that are closer, you know, to the right of way, they all three were a little bit different situation, but, um, it, it was kind of a, a little bit of a stretch that it, it's a unique situation. Um, and so usually what that means is if you have something that's recurring, you need to consider whether you're going to put something in the regulations about it. So that's why the order adjustment, um, requested that we consider it, that we haven't had a lot of discussion. We've had some, but we didn't really.
There was something about carports too, that the carport was such and such foot each that.
But wasn't that all taken out of there?
Was that all removed, removed? That structure of the carports?
I think the only thing that was hidden on a carport was that it had to be anchored, structurally anchored to the ground.
And then you talked about something about, we talked about that, because they were there about, if something was changed then as far as how they could park or whatever in public areas, you mentioned that a couple weeks ago too. There was something about carports that if they were certain, whatever, you didn't construct them or something? Which, you know, people should have the right to build what they want on the property.
Maybe he's right, it's just got to be structured down in the ground.
Do we have something on size, Keith, where it's under a certain size, they don't need to permit?
I don't know where I come up with that, but it was something to that effect that.
The King and I too, that, you know, we have all this in the zoning regs, but there's also the floodplain section. And so if you're building something in a floodplain, then it's got added conditions that you have to meet, even if it's a carport.
Maybe that's what.
That's probably where.
There's more conditions to it then.
Mm-hmm. Yep, because the carport has to be anchored.
Yeah.
Actual propane tank is supposed to be anchored, you know, everything has to be elevated in a certain amount. There's a number of extra things.
Are those part of the.
And that's just.
Floodplain is in here as well, I believe, and.
Is that new compared to what we have?
Not much for changes, because I think it's the minimum standards. Um, oh, I know, unless you're thinking, like, on a pertinent structures, there is some language, I don't think you have it in here and have it in the past, but, um, you can add some language on a pertinent structures, which is like garages and carports and stuff. If they're less than 400 square feet and they're enclosed, then you can put flood openings in, but that's, that just applies in the floodplain. And maybe that's what.
Maybe that's, yeah.
And that's, otherwise, without that in there, if somebody wants to put a car, like a garage, just a single car garage, and it's all enclosed, you have a door, and it's in the floodplain, you have to have an elevation certificate to show that it's high enough.
Yeah. That makes sense. What about structures that's already currently in the.
Well, the ones that are in there are, that are on, they're continuing. But if they're damaged more than 50% and you're going to fix them up, you have to bring them up to compliance. Believe me, I did enough of them after the flood.
And that's all state and federal regulations?
Well, that's all state and federal regulations, okay.
And so, yeah, the state and federal dictates a lot of what's not flooded.
Okay.
But if you want the pertinent structure language in there, and Knox County has it, we got the state, they probably just had to write it.
Did you put that in?
I don't know that it's in here.
I don't think so.
Am I supposed to add a little county level?
I think it simplifies things on these small buildings, but, um, if they have, if they choose to have flood insurance, they can make their rates a little higher, but that's their choice. But it is something that is allowed.
Okay, we got another back portion. I got another thing about the livestock deal. We really don't take care of that anymore. Who takes care of all that stuff? Or why?
We still want to deal with the location of them, that we've never dealt with them as far as, uh, if it's permitted or not. All the Kennesaw County really ability to do is if they're in the right location, just like anything else, if the wind turbines are in the right place. What we've done, what's proposed in here is Liz helped me, is it a thousand or 300 right now that requires, 301 that requires conditional use, right?
Animal units?
You mean right now? Yeah. Because they changed it.
Yeah, I think right now you're at 301 animal units.
I think so.
You're required, if I'm a livestock producer and I meet that definition, I've got to go to a conditional use permit, even though I may only have 400 head of cattle. Under the new rules, that doesn't kick in until you hit 2,501 cattle. So if I'm the smaller guy, I don't have to go, as long as they meet the requirements, Liz can sign off and it's done. So when the bigger guys that are going to have to come through here, where everybody had to basically in the past.
Well, I got an issue there. West of town where this guy has cut corners there, it's probably got 300 cattle or so, but the slope is, so when the rain comes in, it zips down into the neighbor's field and scatters that.
Well, that's not something that's allowed to have happen, period. Well, that's not something that's allowed to have happen, period.
Really?
That's a D.
Yeah, that one could be turned over to the DE too, and they could deal with that. Now, earlier today though, I did have someone that called me, and Keith and I haven't even really had much of a chance to talk about this, but he was concerned about a feedlot going in, and it's just small, less than 300 animal units next to a cemetery. And so I'm not sure if we've dealt with that really. Because if you have a cemetery and somebody has 50 head of cattle right across the fence, they're making dust and flies and smell, and you want to go have some peaceful fun in that cemetery. That could be a problem, so is that something we want added?
Well, then you do have things in there.
Yeah. But I think if, I looked quick and...
You've got 200 acre pasture, 50 animal units.
If it's a pasture, we'd have...
Yeah, that's what I mean, you're talking about a confined...
This was a small confined...
Yeah, okay, I was going to say, you don't have to find, I mean...
Right by...
You've got 50 head of pasture beside the sanctuary, they might gather a bunch of them.
Yeah, but this is...
Fine, yeah, that's...
So, do we want anything in there on that?
I don't know, sometimes you pass more rules and regulations and it just makes it tougher for everybody.
Don't cemeteries have something in there now?
I was looking this morning and I wasn't finding cemeteries. I saw like churches, schools, public recreation areas, but I didn't see cemeteries in the current regs, but it is in the draft, so it will be when it's more than 300, I believe. 300 animal units.
If they stay under 250, then they're probably...
Yeah, they have 200 head. But the guy that called wanted to see like 30 head, or whatever, you know, really small number.
So, are your regulations brought up to mix on the livestock deal that we're comfortable with, or do we need to change something?
Give what?
Are you comfortable with the regulations that he has drawn up in the livestock deal for the county?
Yeah, they're somewhat similar to what Knox County does, and, you know, so we've been using them for a while and...
We can pass that portion of it, we can deal with that. Everybody's comfortable with it.
What is the churches, like there's livestock too close to churches, like a rock or something like that?
Well, see, that's the question I'm asking right now.
That's not considered...
But I thought you said there's something in here for churches and stuff like that.
Well, right now, it says churches, schools, public recreation areas.
Over at 300 or higher.
But in the new, it includes cemeteries too.
At 300 and higher, when those celebrations...
And there again, that's animal units.
Animal units.
Yeah, that means if they're 300 pounds, it's different than if they're 900.
Animal, an animal unit is based upon a thousand pound steer. As far as passing this pieces, I guess my recommendation would be wait and make all the changes and do everything. I'm going to make it cleaner. It'll make your work life a lot easier too.
What is important to this, do we need to address?
The only other major thing that has, I guess, on the livestock that you need to know about that Paul will add in here that we don't have any longer, is that north, south, east, west separation distances. It's all one distance, and what we did is we took, I believe the north, south one, and it's all, doesn't matter what kind of waste handling facility you have, it's all treated the same way. You know, it's a great idea to have a faculty system, but the reality and the economics of it is, a farmer's not going to put in a faculty system, it's all going to be anaerobic, and it's all going to be done, you know, to what normal science is, so we'll just address it that way.
That probably simplifies it quite a lot.
And one of the things you should note in here is there's not as much paragraph. And the other big thing is with the districts, that you'll notice, is instead of having everything listed in the districts that's allowed, they're now on tape. Start on page 56.
So there's a lot more uses listed in that one. Takes out some of that right here.
So what you do is you typically find the use that you want, and you go over to the district and find out if it's allowed. If it's allowed, is it permitted use or is it conditional use? So it takes a lot of the, you know, a lot of typing and a lot of text and stuff out of the document, it makes it simpler.
Yeah, you don't have to read the... Five seconds.
Yeah.
Three months permitted and conditional use. If you just look at approved, there's conditional use for one permitted and the other three.
Yeah, it depends on the zone. The planning commission...
I thought our zoning was all A.
What?
I thought it was all A. Why would it be permitted at three, other than conditional use for one?
It's conditional only in the general A, which is your white areas on the map, so...
I guess I shouldn't have to...
Yeah, we've, I've heard that comment before, we're just zoning A. But already we have A, A River Corridor, A Transitional, you know, so we do have more than one zone. Granted, they're all A districts right now.
Can you put that RCI in at some point between now and when you originally adopted it? And the planning commission just wanted to expand it a little bit, so you might get, you can basically do a mixed use area. You might have a farm next to a convenience store on the highway.
All the pink on there is the RCI zone, it follows the highways? Because they'd much rather see commercial type things along the highway where we have the infrastructure and...
And your flood map, your floodplain would be on there, but they don't have that set up in the digital format yet. But you do have the airport zoning on there from the city to the airport.
What about the private airport west of Alton, is there some restrictions on it yet?
There are no restrictions or protections. I have, I've...
So you did build a structure, did you do it on the...
Uh, could, it's either, no, no, because I will tell you, I've tried this in other counties, and it gets really to be a nightmare trying to regulate, protect the private strips. Department of Aeronautics even does the, the former Department of Aeronautics has recommended that you don't do it because of some issues. You just got to, that becomes a civil suit. Any other questions?
I don't know, it seems like you've got a lot more paper work to fit these on, people, ahead of the lab.
Yeah, a little bit, but a lot of it, I think, you've got what, 40 plus pages of just definitions? Your definitions go to page 46, so...
And if you're going to enforce it, you need those definitions.
Yeah, I suppose you do.
Were these four changes beginning to that download before they...
Which changes? Oh, I think they submitted some of that stuff to the planning commission, yes. But that's kind of been stickler, I think, I mean, they can bend you with those four issues.
Planning commission.
They've chose to push it on like they have, so...
But they haven't seen this paper per se.
No, they've seen, they've seen similar stuff. Now, there's a couple of things in here like permits and certifications that need to be probably fixed, and those things can be done. Depending on what you folks want to do with this eventually. Well...
Oh, and like one more thing that's in here, I guess, Josh, we didn't talk about it a whole lot, but somebody had brought this to my attention too. If you have a wind farm that they're shutting down in here right now, we missed this. There's one place where it says that they need to be taken out within 12 months, and another place where it says 180 days, so we need to make that consistent.
Well, that, that deal is, or is the wind tower going to put him up and take that with the landowner? Is there an issue with him?
Well, it's, it's in here and it has two different timelines. 118, number 11, B and D. Uh, B, C, and D, actually. And it could be part of it between...
What would you rather have, 12 months or six months? What was our other one? Our other one, did we have anything in yoga?
It was 180 days. After it has, it's considered, considered a discontinued use after one year, and then they have 180 days to renew it.
Yeah, they have it set out of four years.
You know, a lot of that depends upon the number of hours and so forth, I mean...
Time of year.
You know, unrealistic.
You have a time of year, then you would be able to...
Because if you get six months and this was, you know, October.
On the E for Michigan, it shouldn't have something to do with...
Yeah, it's his issue.
It's his issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, same here, we could make it change. Because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, I think the reason why it was in there in the first place is because other parts of the country, they don't have anything about when it has to be taken down, and some of them don't, and pieces are falling off.
Could be, I mean, what you want is to make sure these things come down in a certain period of time. They don't become, just sitting there and becoming deteriorated or lappidated, everything hanging around. Because what's going to happen is if you don't have some sort of plan that you can at least hold somebody to or have some money there, you're going to get stuck with a bill eventually, probably. Because the landowner is not going to have the capabilities to get the crane in there to do it, therefore, they're going to, they're going to fall back on you guys. You don't want that.
Fall back, you can, it's their property. Their property.
It's their property, you signed a contract with the wind towers. I mean, they could, I mean, if it's, I don't know the cost of it, but I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, what if they walk away and you, you guys are stuck with a lien against the property eventually? It will become, it will become your issue.
So, how do you have a lien of the property, because we don't own it.
Taxes or something like that. But one thing is changing, it was just too much to tolerate.
Well, it has both in here, we just need one or the other.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, long as we got one, I don't care if it takes...
It just needs to be removed.
Yeah. I'd long to sit there, the time, and I, you know, it's no big deal, but I think it should be in there. Maybe a year, I don't care.
Let's see, 12 months.
Yeah.
Well, it says 12 months and two of those are section one page.
It doesn't bother me. 10, five, 10 years, then.
Well, it does say that this period may be extended by the board of supervisors following the written request by an agent or owner. It's not really installed in there.
Yeah.
So you give 12 months and then nothing, that everything comes out here? Then you have to give...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So then, you give them 12 months and they can come in and ask us for another 12 months? What if they don't come in and ask us, how do we enforce? That's, that's what I don't understand.
It's their property.
I think that's what that, meaning for the...
The deep permission...
Or whatever they have is there. If they don't do it, you can come in and act on that and use that money to make sure that it does.
We'd have to hire the crane to come in and take it down.
That's what you use the law on for? You know, there's a lot of stables, people have been there, you know, we might have some individual hired the crane, take that down just for the stables.
Yeah, you never know. I don't know what you need to do, you have a lot of money coming in.
Okay. So, what do we want to send?
What would work for...
Uh, I put down, I was looking up the calendar, the calendar locked over. But that's going to get into, I don't know. The other dates would be 11th of November, 7th of November or the 14th of November.
I think it's 10 o'clock.
Okay. At 1:00?
Yeah, I think we'll have a shorter meeting.
We should have.
1:00 you said?
Yeah.
About 11:00.
I'll come back at 1:00. Yeah. You got any more comments? Anybody else?
What time was it, eleven?
My work for you.
I have some things that I have in my list, so.
November eleventh.
October.
October, October tenth.
Is it, is it October tenth, is that right, or eleven?
Ten.
The ten, okay, because he said the eleventh.
October tenth, right?
It's during the meeting on this-
Oh, okay.
The regents, the regents meeting.
Ten, eleven o'clock.
The ten, at eleven, okay.
About the eleven.
I had it down, and so he started saving, I'm like, what did you say?
No, I didn't.
You see that now?
Okay. Turn up from the business, I'll make a note. One second, we're squalling all these figures today.